At this time, I'll call our meeting to order and we'll ask the clerk if she'll establish a quorum of the board.
Commissioner White, Moore?
Present.
Commissioner Askew? Commissioner German, Whitfield?
Here.
Commissioner Hart?
Here.
Commissioner Stoltz?
Present.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, board, you do have an agenda that was published last week on our website and Facebook page. Is there any modifications or changes to the agenda tonight? Okay, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Say.
A second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved as presented. Now, we have the approval of our minutes from our regular scheduled meeting that was held on September 28, 2023 at 7:00. So the clerk has prepared those minutes from our last meeting. Is there any corrections, changes, or modifications to those minutes tonight? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve as presented?
Motion to approve as presented.
We have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion of the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as presented. Okay, at this time, we'll move into our public hearings. And so, we have several public hearings here tonight. And the way this process will work is anyone that would like to come up and speak regarding these public hearings, we ask you that you come to the podium. So the microphone will pick you up for those watching at home on our Facebook Live. And then, we will set the clock. You'll get five minutes to speak. We ask you to keep your comments related to that one item of the public hearing. If there's other county business that you would like to speak about, that's later in the agenda and you'll be able to address the board on any other county topic you'd like to talk about. But as we're doing the public hearings, we've got to stick to those items specifically. And as you'll see on the agenda, once we get through with all of those, then we'll go into new business there toward the bottom of the agenda packet. And then, on the second page, you'll see those items again on the ones that we hit the public hearing zone. That's when the board will take action and vote on those items from the public hearing. So it's a two-step process. So we have the public hearing, get into the new business, and the board will take action items on those along with a couple of purchase orders and some other things. So at this time, our first public hearing is a request to rezone from CN Commercial Neighborhood to C1 Commercial for property located at 9180 West Highway 136, Chickamauga, Georgia, 30707, tax map and partial number 0-256-029. So is anyone here tonight that would like to be first and come up that would like to speak in opposition? You'd like to speak in opposition? Okay, please come up.
May I ask a question before I get started?
Sure.
May I speak to all of the CN zonings that want to go to C1 to save time for everybody here? Or do I have to speak to just this particular?
Yeah, I think as long as you're speaking to what's the public hearings about, I think that would be okay.
Okay.
You're right, it would save a lot of time.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
So for that purpose, I would like to...
If you would please state your name.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry.
My name is Melissa Halsey. I live at 6765 South Highway 341. And for the purpose, I'm speaking on all the zonings that are requesting to go from C1 to CN. Okay.
Or about the opposite of that.
CN to C1.
I'm sorry, CN to C1. Yes, yes, thank you, thank you so much. Okay. So the big question here tonight is liquor sales. And it has been said, and it is true, that the county overwhelmingly voted to have liquor sales. But let me read the question as it was printed on the ballot. The question read, "Shall the issuance of licenses for the packaged sale of distilled spirits within the unincorporated limits of Walker County be approved?" Question mark. And that was approved. 14,375, yes. 7,025, no. But let me tell you what was not asked. What was not asked is, "Should zoning be changed to allow liquor sales in residential and agricultural areas? Should liquor be sold in zones where the county currently prohibits C1 zoning? The results may have been very different if the questions had been phrased that way. We residents trusted that the liquor sales be enforced as the county ordinance mandates. When we voted on this, we had no idea that you were planning to change zoning. We voted it as the mandates were written, and we voted in good faith that you would enforce those mandates." Furthermore, Resolution R-013-22, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to adopt the Walker County Joint Comprehensive Plan. This was motioned by Stoltz, seconded by Hart, four yays, zero nays, and it was signed by Commissioner Whitfield. This was not somebody else's comprehensive plan, this was your comprehensive plan. This was not something that anybody else came up with or wrote. You all came up with it and wrote it. I went back and I checked the minutes, and I could find no record in the minutes where anybody said, except for liquor sales. We really think liquor sales would be a great idea. No one made that exception. And that was the time to make an exception if you did not agree with this plan. The plan clearly has, and I have a map here, anybody can see it if they'd like to, the plan clearly has agricultural zoning and R2 zoning in the areas in question this evening. This joint comprehensive plan is a map for our future. And it was a promise. It was a promise that you all made to each and every citizen in here. It was a promise that said, "This is what we plan to do. And unless you spoke otherwise, we expect you to hold to that plan. If you do not hold to that plan, you break trust with us and it creates chaos. We respectfully ask you tonight, do not break your promise." It would also weaken the ordinances, opening this county up to lawsuits, because with spot zoning, we all know, if you zone one thing, then it's easier to get the next, and the next, and the next zoned in that same way. Right now, we ask you to hold strong on this zoning. Keep our ag areas ag, keep our residential areas residential. We were not given the opportunity to vote on that. Walker County Ordinance, Section 22-144. For the purpose of this article, the county is divided into districts as following, and it lists 10 districts. Section 22-146, Development. All land within the unincorporated area of the county has a designated land use district described in Section 22-145. All development within these districts must comply with the development standards applicable to that particular district. Now, let's move forward to Section 22-148. R2 and agriculture are listed as prohibited use in accordance to the county's own ordinances. On here, I have particular fault with the question that reads, "Suitability of the subject property for the zone proposed." Yes. No, it is not suitable, because currently, these are all CN. It is prohibited use to put C1 in these districts. And I respectfully, on behalf of all the people here, ask you once again, keep your promise, keep our zoning ordinances in place. Thank you so much.
Okay, who else would like to speak in opposition of the first one? Or if you'd like to speak to all of these, just as she did, that would be fine as well just for the sake of time.
Yes, ma'am.
Sure, come on up and please state your name for the record, and this one will start.
Okay, thank you. My name is Susan Everett, and I am in opposition to the liquor sales and being on Mission Ridge Road and in our county residential areas. I have, I cannot speak as eloquently as this lovely lady here. I wish I could, but I'm not. But I do have concerns about it. I don't think we should have liquor sales on Mission Ridge Road in our neighborhood that is already got problems with drug dealers and alcohol too. The grocery store sells alcohol. And these stores, little stores that are pop, have popped up here and have been there for a while, they sell drug paraphernalia, they sell kratom, they sell all kinds of things that's related to drugs and drug abuse. Kratom is legal, yes, I've seen that. But it shouldn't be, because it's as addictive as anything else. I know that personally from family members who are having problems with that. They take, they buy the kratom because it's lesser a problem than the heavier drugs. But it's still addictive. And anything that's addictive alters your mind, alters your thinking, alters your values. And I think we need to protect our kids and keep this out of temptation for them. They shouldn't even be seeing it or hearing about it, really. And, you know, I'm very concerned about that. And I want us to, I want our county, it cost our county a lot of money, y'all know that more than anybody, for drug addiction treatment for children that have been taken out of homes. And county has to pay for that to take care of those children. And the cottage has to be there to help supply a reasonable, some things for the children in care. And I just feel like we are opening a box that we are gonna, it's gonna cost more money, it's gonna cost more lives, it's gonna cost more families, you know, problems, more arrest, and just a terrible, it's gonna change the face of that whole neighborhood. I know that, like she said, they were voted in, I didn't vote for it, because I didn't understand the question on the ballot anyway, fully. So I just feel like that was a sneaky way to get us into this situation. And things should be very clear to people, instead of hiding behind some fancy words. And I just ask y'all to hold up Walker County that we, what we want it to represent and not turn into people walking down the road with brown bags or up my neighborhood in the backyard, which they do sometimes anyway, going to the store. And used to, they did it with buying the beer and all that stuff too. I just don't think we need to see that on our streets and in front of our kids. And I don't think we need to just say, "Well, we're gonna support 14,000 people who voted for it by putting it in our back door, in our neighborhoods." If you want to put it on 27, let them invest in the money to open up an expensive place for them to have it, instead of in our neighborhoods and bringing our people down, instead of elevating our people and our standard of living. And that's just why I just wanted to share that with you.
Who would like to speak next? Yes, sir, on the end here, please, sir. Please state your name when you're ready, and we'll start the clock.
My name is Edward Yates. I'm in opposition purely because of knowing what little, although I'm not, I'm not returning, but I believe that when y'all have done something and passed the ordinances and stated, you can't back down unless there's a valid reason. And it's the same as if you change the deal with from CN to C1, you end up with, you're standing on a slope covered with ice. It takes very little to start sliding, and once you start, just as the lady said, that you'll be one more, another one, and another one, and another one. And we no longer have a rural agricultural community that's good for, for people that have moved from other areas to get away from the metropolitan areas and problems. That's what you're, you're, we don't need to be bigger. I mean, that's simple, the principle is, should be very simple to all of y'all. Thank you.
Who would like to come next? Yes, please.
My name is Jill Bolson, and I'm seeking an opposition. So don't lose my track. Okay. So when I heard about the possibility of these proposed liquor stores, I had immediate concerns. So I did some research into the effects of liquor stores into communities. So I found several published papers, but the most relevant and the most thorough was a study published by the National Library of Medicine studying violent crime in communities. So a violent crime is robbery, aggravated assault, rape, manslaughter, and homicide. So what they were studying is the increases in crimes due to the presence of, they studied drug rehab facilities, corner stores, convenience stores, and liquor stores. The results were that the presence of liquor stores highly elevated the mean rates of crime compared with these other venues. So again, our corner store at 136 and 193, for example. So this liquor store will significantly elevate that. And it also showed that it significantly decreased the farther away you got from liquor stores. So this supported the notion that liquor stores are magnets for crime, consistent with the other published studies. So I am sympathetic that if you live in Lafayette and you want to make a margarita, you don't want to have to drive all the way to Chattanooga. Like, I get why so many people voted yes, but that does not mean that we want them in our rural communities and in our neighborhoods. So city zones are more equipped to handle the increases in crime better than agricultural districts and neighborhoods. We live out here because we do not mind the drive. We have made a life choice to move out of the cities. I am here to plead with you and to fight for our community. A community of families, a community of farmers, and those who have decided to live outside of the city limits in a peaceful valley where crime is extremely low. I'm fighting for a legacy to leave my children. And these have long-term effects, a legacy and jeopardy if you allow these liquor stores. Both from a zoning and development standpoint, like Mrs. Halsey has mentioned, it is not our wish for you to bring these into our quiet community. I have spoken with our District 4 Commissioner, Robert Schultz, who I know shares our values and sees the beauty in our agricultural district. We are so thankful to have him as our representative, because I know that he shares our values and wants to see it preserved and protected. So I am here hoping that the other commissioners will respect these values of our citizens and vote no to that rezoning request. Thank you.
Who would like to speak next?
Is this still opposition?
Yeah, this is still opposition. Is anybody still in opposition on the first one primarily? Okay, so if the applicant or anyone that would like to speak for this first one would like to come up now, would you like to come up? Yes, come on up, please. Please state your name.
Hello, everyone. My name is Krian Patel. I speak for 9180 West Highway 136. Several of you guys know me from, from the Yanks Quick Stop store. I've been there since '06. Now, I completely understand everybody's point. I really do. The only reason I'm changing CN to C1 is because the ordinance required, okay? So I'm not doing anything else to that property. And plus, it's not anybody else's property that I'm changing it from. It's been our property since '06. So that's the only reason I'm doing it. And there are several properties in Walker County that are already C1, that has agriculture land around it. On 151, I know it's C1, and they've been granted okay, because they're just C1, and they have been C1. So if I would've known a long time ago that if it was coming or whatever, I don't know that, I can't read the future, so, but I would've changed it to C1 back then. So I just don't understand. I mean, I think it's unfair to people like me that are changing the zone just because the liquor store's coming. I'm already selling beer and wine at that store. I've been selling it before that. The previous owner used to sell it too. So in that regards, I'm not, I'm not doing anything else to that property besides just following what you guys, the ordinance that you guys have made up. And I don't know what else to say, but thank you. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else that has not spoken that'd like to speak? Yes, sir, come up, please.
I'm a partner with Yanks Quick Stop.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Michael Patel. And, see, Walker County people allowed to sell liquor. And the government responsibility is to draft the laws and allow that thing to happen. Now, being Walker County and being county, there are not many C1 properties outside in the county, because the city, if it's in a city, you can find more properties as a C1 compared to the, to the county. And this location is, it's been selling alcohol already, and we had never had to do anything with, with it before this ordinance came in. And that's the only reason we want to change to C1, so we can sell liquor there. There, McLemore, they're building more resorts there, more motels in there, golf courses they're building, I think two or three more golf courses coming there. So that road is going to be busy, and a lot of tourists are going to be coming through that road. And every, every dollar we sell, every dollar we sell, three cents goes through the county. So it's going to bring a lot of revenue to the county too. So we just wanted to put that out there and in the favor of proving to the C1.
Anyone else that'd like to speak on this first one? Okay, hearing none, we're gonna go to the next one. That is Green Cross Consulting and Barking, request a rezone from C1 Commercial Neighborhood to C1 Commercial for property located at 1981/1979 North Highway 341, Rossville, Georgia, 30741, tax map and partial number 0-108-043A. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition of this one?
No.
Okay, in opposition of this second one we have? Okay, anyone like to speak?
Well, I'm gonna ask the same question as she did, that's, because that's for a liquor license as well, right?
Yeah, and you stated as well, any that was going from CN to C1, that kind of, your comments kind of blanketed all of those.
And I just think we want anybody to forget that.
Okay.
So I'm just gonna bring that up again.
Yes, sir, I think you wanted to speak?
Yeah.
Yeah, please, come on up, please.
I'm here to speak for the nation.
Okay, that's fine.
So...
Please state your name.
My name is Michael Johnson. I live in Rossville, Georgia. So basically, what we want to do is propose the plan to, for this property, the problem was the parking. So we came up with a plan to fix the parking on it, to make, change it from a CN to a C1. As a lot of people are opposing this, in this area, we're, there's not a whole lot of money, there's not a whole lot of businesses and place for people to work and stuff. This is gonna give a lot of people around there work, it's gonna bring in revenue. We got Ironman coming through there all the time and all that stuff. And this right here proposal will bring money to people that would go to Tennessee, or it would go to Ringo, or it would go somewhere else. So I know everybody's mad about the liquor license, but I'm a voter. I voted for a lot of y'all on the board right here, and I voted for this to be in our county, because I know it's gonna bring more money, more business, more opportunities for like construction workers like me to fix these problems. But here's the plan.
Okay, yeah, you can show it.
So as, as the building is right now, it's gonna have to be cut in half structurally, have to be fixed and everything. The side on the, right now, it only has nine parking places. By the time it's done, it will have...
Eighteen parking places.
Eighteen parking places. So the backside, it does share a easement with the neighbors, but when we take that section off, that won't even be an easement no more, that'll be their driving.
Okay, so total building size is 2,677 square feet. You're gonna remove 1,110 square feet.
Yes, sir.
Eighteen parking spots and two handicap spots. Eight and a half foot wide and eighteen feet long.
How many spots would be that size? Eighteen feet long.
The size of a parking spot?
Yeah.
Eight?
Eight.
Okay.
Eight point three.
Was it supposed to be eight point three?
Yes, eight point three.
Okay.
No. I feel like this is gonna be a good opportunity for everybody in Walker County, whether or not people know this, but there's a lot of people coming from Tennessee drinking to go get their alcohol to come here. And this will cut that down a lot, drinking and driving and stuff. I believe. Far as like drugs and stuff, I don't know.
Okay. All right. Okay. You take this out? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak about this one on Highway 341?
Can I make one question?
Well, if you do, you need to come back up so we can get you on the record now again. You can.
I just wanted to...
Please, please state your name.
I'm Susan Everett, and I just wanted to comment on the bringing tourists in and Ironman. I don't believe that the people who participate in Ironman and the people who come and watch it are gonna be sitting around drinking or drinking while they're riding bicycles, because that surely would be dangerous, and people have been killed, and they were sober, I hope. But anyway, I just didn't think that was a, something to be considered.
Jamie Halsey, Melissa's husband again. So what's the advantage to Walker County for a liquor store to be in the appropriate district versus ag district or R2 district? In whole, what's the advantage to Walker County? Maybe you can't answer in this session. So these emotions going around about liquor stores in the neighborhoods and right down the road from their kids and daycares, churches, these sentimental things, were some of those the reasons that you established that liquor stores or C1 is prohibited in ag districts or R2 districts? Was that y'all's thoughts? I'm just asking. It's kind of a joke what we get to hear here to say that the Ironman comes through and we're gonna sell liquor. We're gonna bring jobs, like, who works at the liquor stores? Those few guys there, this one guy over here. How are you gonna attract jobs to a liquor store? And I guarantee you'll attract more crime and mischief versus jobs. And you're talking about driving to McLemore, where they sell liquor. They sell liquor up there. But on the way to there, there's plenty of C1 district before you turn on 136 to go to McLemore. And a lot of people come the back way through Chattanooga. Have you been to McLemore? You've seen the Fulton County tags, you've seen the Bradley County, Hamilton County tags, you see all those. Don't you think they're getting their liquor to take to McLemore Cove before they get to, or before they get to McLemore Cove? Are they gonna say, "Well, we'll pull in Yanks, or we're gonna go through Rossville and have our whiskey instead of water while we're riding our bicycle"? So these, it's interesting to hear these excuses of why somebody wants a liquor store in a certain place versus where y'all have already proven them to go. So that's my comment on this, and may have another one coming up, so, thank you.
Anyone else on our second one here on Highway 341, either for or against, that'd like to speak on this one? Second one on our agenda. Okay, hearing none, we'll move toward the third one. William C. Powell requests a rezone from R2 Residential to C1 Commercial for property located at 819 Mission Ridge Road, Rossville, Georgia, tax map and partial 0-124-046. Anyone like to speak in opposition? Yes, sir, please come up. Please state your name.
Scott White.
If you haven't known, a couple of the police officers, you just go right, he lives right over the hill from me, he understands how Rossville is. It's really not a good place no more. It used to be the actual absolute jewel of this area. I mean, everybody knows that, the older gentlemen's, they can all attest, Rossville was it. I had a business in Rossville, I had a business in Chickamauga. I had break-ins nonstop in Rossville. The building next to my building caught on fire, burnt down. They found them at the liquor store on Ross Boulevard after it burnt down. So saying that crime does not come is wrong. I mean, you do not want this out in the country in agriculture areas. No matter what you say, it's not going to help anything. Put it on 27 in Walmart Shopping Center, just like they did in East Brainerd. I mean, put it up out of Chattanooga Valley, not by the churches. One of my best friends has a daycare, y'all going to put it literally next to his daycare? It makes no sense. Put it up by the state line, just like they did in Rossville. They put it at the state line, they didn't put it next to somebody's house, next to somebody's church, next to Mr. Blakemore's farm. I mean, you have a farm on that very corner down there, Mr. Blakemore. Do you want a liquor store by your farm where your kids ride their horses and play? I mean, that's an honest question. I don't. So ask yourself, would you want one right behind your neighborhood where you live, at the bottom of the hill? I work from one end of the county to the other, I see what it does. I've been to Chattanooga, I work all over Chattanooga, I see the crime, I see the problems. And I don't want that from where I live. So if y'all do, move to Chattanooga, get out of Walker County. But as they stated and everybody here stated, we don't want it. It was, it was a scam from the beginning in the election. We thought we was getting nice restaurants to serve alcohol, a nice liquor store over by the Walmart Shopping Center, or over here by the Crush de Mayo, or somewhere in a district that should sell the products that people want, not out by this man's cow farm, not out by your kid's high school, not out by your kid's daycare. We want it in areas it should be in appropriately. I mean, what's next? Are we going to have novelty stores? We're going to have weed shops? I mean, are y'all going to prove that just on a vote, just because everybody says, hey, we want this, but not next to our house? Do we have to state it on the ballot? Because the question mark at the end of the statement didn't say, we'll put it where we want to put it. Y'all didn't specify where you'd put it. We, just like Ms. Holsey stated, we bent, went on y'all's word, y'all would enforce the codes and the laws. These gentleman's job is to do that. But y'all are changing the wording to appropriate this C1 zoning so y'all can get revenue, tax dollars, whatever, at the expense of the taxpayers and everybody else living in these rural areas. And we don't want that. So we need to go back to the drawing board and figure it out. I mean, y'all are the board, y'all are the commissioners, we elected you. Figure it out and listen to the people. That's all I got to say.
Anyone else would like to speak about the one on Mission Ridge Road, 819 Mission Ridge Road? Yes, ma'am, at the very back?
I don't know.
We're not going to be able to get you on camera, so please come forward. And will you just state your name?
Sandra Willbanks for William Powell. He was under the impression he has always been C1. He did not know he was grandfathered in. He just wants to change it to C1 because of, if he ever sells, it needs to be C1 for a commercial business, whether that be retail or anything. And that's the only reason why he's requesting it to be changed to the C1. He did not know he was grandfathered in, he thought he was always C1. So now legally or bank wise, he needs to get that straightened out. So before he can sell, if he sells, he may not sell, but if he does, and the time should come, he wants to be prepared. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak? Okay, we're going to move on through our agenda here. The next one, we have a request for rezone from CN Commercial Neighborhood to C1 Commercial Property located at 1250 Mission Ridge Road, Rossville, Georgia, 30741, tax map impartial number zero dash 125 dash 065. Anyone like to speak in opposition of this one? At the 1250 Mission Ridge Road, anyone in opposition?
I'd best not speak up.
Okay, come on up, please.
I just don't want things to go unopposed. My name is Susan Everett again, and I will oppose this location as well. It backs up to my property, that one is, that one does. And that's a quiet neighborhood, it's, school buses coming through there all the time. There's just numerous reasons. All of these people have voiced such, so eloquently what these reasons are. It's not something we condone in our neighborhoods, in our, with our families, with our churches, with our daycares, with, we don't want to tell kids, raise our kids in the home and say, we don't want you to go out here and get drunk at 17 or, or get out here and drive and drink. And yet, we've got a liquor store sitting right here that they can walk to and get friends to buy it for them, or whatever. We need the, we need, our county represents, I've been in the county for 65 years, and it's always been, the people we know are good morals. Yes, we've had problems, yes, we have bad elements, but overall, we have been a good community and people that stick together and people that want their kids to be raised correctly. And so they can grow up to be law-abiding citizens, so they won't need a lawyer, they won't need police to come and pick them up, they won't be getting in trouble all the time. And I just think that we don't need to put that out here for them and say, our county says it's okay, our commissioners voted for it, the people voted for it, when they didn't really understand what they were voting for. And, I mean, I was like that guy, I thought we were going to get restaurants, nice restaurants in the county. Yeah, they serve drinks. And then a lot of people go in and drink and get DUIs on the way home. But at least the people who don't drink can go have a nice meal locally. But, you know, all these reasons that we want to lower our standards and put our children at risk. I love my kids, I love my grandkids and my great-grandkids, of which I'm raising right now because of alcohol and drugs and drug paraphernalia that is purchased in these stores. And I do not want to sacrifice my children, my legacy, on the altar of pennies on the dollar to go to the county to spend they want. I don't want to sell my soul or my children's souls and, or my neighbors' children's. I care about all these people's children as well. I don't just care about mine. I know that we have a philosophy, as long as mine doesn't get in trouble, it's okay. But mine have to grow up and marry yours, you know? Mine have to grow up and be with yours at some point. So I care about all of our children. And I don't, and, and I think that, I think that these, we need to quit inviting that kind of sales to come in to tear down our children so that somebody else can make a good living off of our children's lives and their future. And I think we need to really stop and think about what we're doing because money is not, you know, I don't care if somebody gives the county a million dollars, that's not going to take, I'm not going to sell you my child or anybody else's child for it. And I think we need to really think about our value system and what do we want to leave our children? Because they're, they're going to grow up and be the leaders. So we need to think about that and plan for that. Thank you.
Would you like to speak next?
Jamie Holsey, we object based on the pre-approved district map that's already been approved by the board and all the other reasons of, of this lady's concern with the community diminished value, which would come with that in these residential areas, so we object.
Anyone else like to speak on this one for 1250 Mission Ridge Road? Is the applicant or anyone in favor of this that we'd like to speak? Yes, sir. Please state your name.
Good evening, my name is Pramod Patel, and I'm the owner of the property located at 1250 Mission Ridge Road. And I was here in the last meeting, when the zoning meeting was. So I was told like there is a neighboring property to me, which is 1202, and the zoning number, parcel number for that property is 67A and 67. They both are commercial property and they both are C1. So I don't know where the misinformation was there. When I talked to the city clerk, she also looked into it and she told that, yeah, there is a neighboring property, C1. And we are just requesting you to convert our commercial property to a C1. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on this one? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to our next item here. Pigeon Mountain Land Company LLC requesting rezone from CN Commercial Neighborhood to C1 Commercial for property located at 5606 West Highway 136, Chickamauga, Georgia, 30707, tax map impartial number zero dash 284 dash 003A. Anyone like to speak in opposition? Yes, ma'am, please come forward. Please state your name.
I'm sorry. My name is Melissa Holsey, and I want to speak particularly to this one because this one is personal. I can see this one from my driveway. So it says the reason that the person wants to sell this is selling, she wants to get it changed from CN to C1 to increase buying opportunities. Essentially, she wants, he or she, I don't know what it is, wants more money, okay? The first thing that you learn in real estate is it better have the zoning you want before you sign on that dotted line and buy it because you are not promised anything other than the zoning it is when you purchase it. This was CN when it was purchased. This seller was never promised or implied unless there's something that I don't know about for this to be zoned to C1. And if everybody came before this board and said, I'd like to make more money, please change my zoning, it would be helter-skelter if that was the reasoning that we would use to change zoning. I don't have a problem with this person wanting to make more money. As a matter of fact, I hope they make a windfall selling this property, I really do. But there's never been a for sale sign up, so you don't know what someone would pay for it in a CN district. But here's what I do know. I may have been the only nerd in this room to read the 261-page joint commission plan. And over and over again in that plan, you know what people asked for? People that were stakeholders, people that took the survey, people that were participants, you know what they wanted? They wanted restaurants. They don't want fast food restaurants, they don't want Applebee's, they want nice, local, like Susan's used to be in Flintstone, right? We want choices, places to eat. So here's an idea for everybody in the room. Why don't these gentlemen that want to open liquor stores get with the Development Authority? Because there are gracious plenty places in Walker County that are currently zoned for liquor stores. And I would applaud you, I would support you, I would wish you the best of luck and success in your liquor store. And I'm sure that the Development Authority is there for the purpose of helping you find an appropriately zoned place. And I would say this, in your R2 or your ag districts where we clearly, the residents, we don't wish you harm, but we don't want it there for a variety of reasons. And Jill, thank you for articulating that. Why don't y'all think about putting a restaurant on your land? You could build a building, you could charge rent, you could make more money because that's what the people want. Why don't we try to look at this joint comprehensive plan that again, you know, let me just say it, bottom line is, y'all made the map, okay? Let me say that again. Y'all made the map. We didn't, just please stick with it, okay? And, and let's try to get something that the people want. Let's try to come up with a solution that makes everybody happy. Y'all can make more money, y'all can have liquor stores in appropriately zoned places, we get nice restaurants or something else that is wanted. I'm just saying, let's think outside the box and let's grow this community in the way that it is intended to grow. And I don't think that that means liquor stores in ag or residential areas, and I certainly don't mean on Pigeon Mountain. We don't even know what she wants to put there or here, right? I mean, they're just saying, we want to get rezoned. We're not going to tell you why, we just want to get rezoned. And by the way, they don't have the appropriate amount of parking. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on the 5605 West Highway 136? Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward. Okay, so that will close out our public hearing on those items that were on the agenda for public hearing. Okay, give me just a second here to transition our papers. Yes, sir, if you'd like, come on up, we'll make an exception. Please state your name, please.
Edward Yates. I am in opposition for some of the reasons being stated. I drink alcohol, okay? I drink beer, I drink whiskey, I drink wine. I've worked with Georgia Wine, I've made a lot of wine. If, it, it goes back to what y'all have already signed off on, what y'all voted on, and the integrity that y'all have as politicians. Are you politicians or are you statesmen? Do you represent what the people really want and is to the benefit long-term, not short-term? You look at, look at our history, look at James Madison, look at the founding fathers, what did they work on? Principle. That's what the residents of Walker County voted y'all in to operate on principle and how good your word is. Are you a man of your word, or you want to back down and be like some of the politicians we currently have? Thank you.
Okay, on our public hearing, very, very last calls, anybody else on the public hearing before we move forward? Last call. This is for the zoning public hearing. Okay. Yeah, we'll have more public hearing on other matters of county business, okay? All right, so we're going to move into our new business now, and we have a resolution 4520, 450, excuse me, R04523, a resolution of the Walker County Board of Commissioners to authorize the filing of the application with the Georgia Department of Transportation and the United States Department of Transportation for a grant for public transportation assistance under Title 49 USC Section 5311, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas the Federal Transit Administration and the Georgia Department of Transportation are authorized to make grants to non-urbanized rural areas for mass transportation projects. And whereas the contract for financial assistance will impose certain obligations under applicants, including the provisions of the local share of the project cost, and whereas it is required by the United States Department of Transportation and the Georgia Department of Transportation in accordance with the provisions of Title 6 of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, that in conjunction with the filing of the application for assistance under the Federal Transit Act, and the applicant's given, gives the assurance that it will comply with Title 6 of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and the United States Department of Transportation requirements thereunder, and whereas it is the goal of the applicant that minority businesses, minority business enterprises, disadvantaged business enterprises, and women business enterprises be utilized to fulfill its extent possible in connection with the project, and that defined procedures shall be established and administered to ensure that the minority businesses shall have the maximum feasible opportunity to compete for contracts and purchase orders when processing construction contracts, supplies, equipment contracts, and consultants, and other services. Therefore, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, here within after reference as the applicant, that the designated official, Shannon Whitfield, Chairman and CEO, here we, here within after reference to this, the official is authorized to execute and file an application on behalf of the applicant of the county government with the Georgia Department of Transportation to aid in the financing of public transportation assistance pursuant to Section 5311 of the Federal Transit Act, that the official is authorized to execute and file such application in assurance of any other documents required by. by the U.S. Department of Transportation and the Georgia Department of Transportation in effecting the purpose of Title VI and the Civil Rights Act of 1964, that the official is authorized to execute and file all other standard assurances or other documents required by the Georgia Department of Transportation or the U.S. Department of Transportation in conjunction with the application for public transportation assistance, that the official is authorized to execute grant contracts, agreements on behalf of the applicant with the Georgia Transport, Georgia Department of Transportation. Number five, that the official is authorized to set forth and execute minority business enterprise, DBE disadvantaged enterprises, and WBE, women business enterprises, policies and procedures in conjunction with the project's procurement needs as applicable. Number six, that the applicant, while making application to or receiving grants from the Federal Transit Administration, will comply with the FTA Circular 9040.1G, FTA Certification Assurances for Federal Assistance 2021, as listed in the grant application and general operation guidelines as illustrated in the Georgia State Management Plan, that the application has or will have available the required non-federal funds to meet local share requirements for the grant application, so resolved and adopted the 26th day of October 2023. So in essence, what all that really means, because that's a lot, is to apply to renew the federal and state funding for our transit program that we use to move citizens to and from our county, to take them to grocery stores, to doctor's appointments, hospital, all the different services that people are seeking that need help in their transportation. So this is something that we do every single year. We have to do this, there's an advertisement for this, and so this is just to proceed for that, and this is actually to proceed for the FY '25 physical year of the federal government, which starts July, July 1 of 2024. So we're working for that, for that FY '25. And so this just authorizes me to go through their online system, to sign off on the documents that the county's been doing for probably the last 25-plus years. So is there any questions or concerns of the board?
Yes, sir.
All right, hearing none, we have a motion to approve the resolution as read.
Yes, sir, motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart, and we have a second.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is approved. Okay, Resolution R 4623 to authorize the filing of the application with the Georgia Department of Natural Resources for a recreational trail grant. Resolution R 46-23, a resolution of Walker County Board of Commissioners to authorize the filing of an application with the Georgia Department of Natural Resources for a recreational trail grant, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas Walker County owns and operates a public walking trail on the grounds at the Walker County Civic Center campus, and whereas the board desires for Walker County to submit a pre-application for funding from the Georgia Department of Natural Resources Recreational Trail Program, the RTP, to assist in making improvements to this community asset. And whereas in the event, Walker County's pre-application is recommended for funding by the Georgia Department of Natural Resources, the board certifies and assures that it has the ability and the intentions to finance up to 30% of the total project cost and will move forward with due diligence to prepare and have prepared appropriate documentation required for the formal RTP application. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, do hereby authorize the filing of the recreational trail program grant application with the Georgia Department of Resources. Be further resolved that the board agrees to provide up to 30% matching for the grant and will continue to provide support for the long-term maintenance of the trail, so resolved and adopted the 26th day of October 2023. We currently have Phase 1 and Phase 2 under construction, which was funded by our SPOLOSH dollars, it was a SPOLOSH program, for the all-inclusive playground. And so construction on that started this week, and hopefully within the next 30 days, those phases will be completed. This is an application to apply for potentially up to another $750,000 to have a second phase and to continue to approve that project. And so it is a competitive grant that you go through every year, and so we are hopeful that since we're making this initial investment, that this will be very favored, plus just the landscaping of having a community civic center in the center of our county, already having an existing walking track there. But as you know, that walking, really pathway is an aggregate that washes a lot due to the elevation and the contours of that land. So we want to be able to work toward getting some of these grant fundings to make that a hard surface, maybe even possibly a little wider so more people can utilize it to make that as a destination. So again, this is just authorizing to move forward with that grant application, and then if we were successful in receiving the grant, then it would have to come back to the board for final approval, and scope of work and all that information would be provided for the board at that time to make the final determination to move forward with the project or not. Any questions or concerns?
Mr. Chairman, with regard to the upgrades and improvement, will that be expanding the existing walking trail and improvements on the current walking trail?
Definitely to take it from a gravel or an aggregate surface to go with a solid surface that will be easier to maintain, be less maintenance. I'm sure we would have the preview if it made sense to alter that walking path if there was an advantage to make improvements to that. So basically, the grant application, they're wanting us to, you know, present those ideas and different things that we want to accomplish, but trying to make it where there's something there for everybody of all abilities, all ages. It, with the elevation changes, and sometime we're getting washed out, sometimes it's hard for people to use that because, you know, it's an ongoing maintenance issue, and you get a three- or four-inch rain, and somebody's got to go back and spend a half a day reshaping that area.
I think it would be nice if, you know, if it were a hard surface, that way folks in wheelchairs, mobility issues, could access that a little bit better. And I think, you know, maybe when the final plans are looked at, we'd just like to be sure there's accessibility for folks with mobility issues that they can enjoy that, you know, the trail as well.
And that is a big focus there. We are seeking on the Phase 1 and 2 for national certification, that that is an ADA all-inclusive playground for children of all abilities, and so that's something that we hope to obtain that certification with our partners at PlayCor, that was the original intent. So we want to get that whole campus, we've made some upgrades over the last several years to the inside of the civic center, making sure doors are proper widths, and bathrooms and sinks, and those type of things are all ADA compliance to make it accessible to all.
Thank you.
Sure, good question. Any further questions or comments? All right, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve Resolution 4623?
Motion to approve.
Well, the motion by Commissioner Blake Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next item on our agenda is Resolution R-04723. Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, to appoint members of the Walker County Planning Commission, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas one of its duties delegated to the Chair, Chairman of the Board is to appoint members to all committees of the Board with the approval of the Board, and whereas Chairman Whitfield submitted the following appointments to serve as members of the Walker County Planning Commission. Todd Holt for a term beginning January 1, 2024, and ending on December 31, 2026. Randy Pittman for a term beginning immediately and ending on December 31, 2023, and a new term beginning on January 1, 2024, and ending on December 31, 2026. Whereas Todd Holt and Randy Pittman are duly qualified to serve as members of the Planning Commission and have expressed a willingness to serve the people of Walker County in such capacity. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the appointments of Todd Holt and Randy Pittman are approved, so resolved and adopted the 26th day of October 2023. Currently, Todd Holt is a sitting member, so his term actually expires at the end of this December. We have a vacancy, and that's why it's a little bit unique in the reading there, for Mr. Randy Pittman. He will be finishing out the remaining of the term this year for our member, and then he would take on a new three-year term. So that just keeps our cycles in sync where we have potentially as many as three members up for appointment or reappointment every single year, and there's 12 members to that board or commission. So at this time, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Resolution 47-23. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the board?
Just like to mention, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Askew could unfortunately not be here tonight, but he wanted to indicate that he was very pleased with both of these appointments moving forward.
Good, thank you. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, those nominations are approved by the board. Okay, we have a quick claim deed between Walker County, Georgia, and the City of Lafette for tax parcel 1039-049, and this was drawn up by the City of Lafette Attorney, and this is for a small piece of property that is across the street from the current Commissioner's office at the corner of Highway 136 and South Duke Creek, South Duke Road, excuse me.
Duke Street.
Duke Street, yes, South Duke Street, thank you. And so this is just a square grass patch that the city has got an interest in, is part of their master planning that they've been doing to bring improvements and revitalization to the city. This property is just sitting there, it actually, they're looking to put up a feature there and tie into the Walker Rocks, and also to put in a welcome sign to Lafette and make when people come in off of Highway 136, that that would be the first gateway entrance of the city. And so they've been working with some master planners and design and have come up with a pretty impressive concept that they want to do. So this would take and convey this property to the city. There is a reverter clause in here that forever they decided to quit using that property or had no use for it, they would not have the right to sell that property. That property would revert back to the county. So it just keeps it where there's not any risk or issue in the future of anyone coming up and, you know, trying to sell that property in the future for a property, for a profit without it conveying back to the county. We do have a two-story brick building there next to that, and so they, we shall retain a 20-foot easement through that area so they're not too close to that building, so we can still maintain and work on that building. So is there any questions or comments about conveying this property? Our county attorney has been working with the city's attorney on this, Mr. Womack, and made sure it meets all the legal requirements and checked all the boxes.
That's correct.
Okay, so do we have a motion to quick claim and convey this property to the City of Lafette?
Yes, sir, motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we do have an appeal tonight on our new business. This is appeal from Sandy Steele concerning denial of her liquor store license application for Sand Lee, Inc., DBA, sips and shots beside 4464 North Highway 27, Lafette, this is District 3. Is Ms. Steele here tonight? Yes. Please come forward and state your reason for your appeal to this denial.
My name is Sandy Steele. My husband and I grew up in North Georgia. We're currently residents of Walker County. We own a business in Walker County. We spend the majority of our money in Walker County. Last year, we contributed over $100,000 in state sales tax, state and county sales tax, nearly $8,000 in property taxes. Payroll taxes last year were over $225,000. We also pay federal and state income taxes every year. The majority of our employees currently live in Walker County. The majority of our money is spent in Walker County. Our groceries, our gas, dining out, doctors, dentist, veterinarians for our dog. The property that we own is already zoned C1. Out of the 15 applications for the liquor store license, I was the only female and the only one not named Patel. My application was denied because it was assumed that my building, new construction of a building for the liquor store, would be within 1,500 feet door-to-door of one that was applied and approved by a Mr. Patel. My property is 6.38 acres. I can build on the northern corner, within the guidelines of the setback lines, and I calculated based on where their front door is, to where my proposed front door would be, would be 1,531 feet door-to-door in a straight line. Customers obviously cannot travel door-to-door in a straight line, they have to travel by the road, which would make it more, considerably more than 1,500 square, or 1,500 feet door-to-door. So I am asking you to reconsider my application. I have a little sketch of a proposed building. It would be a well-lit, very visible, commercial building. I don't want to care to just anyone. I want the females in Walker County to feel comfortable coming into my store and browsing without feeling intimidated or nervous about their visiting my store location. Property taxes on this vacant land for 2023 is $1,178. With an improved building on that property, I'm sure the property taxes would go up. Again, I plan on building, I would like to build about a 3,000-square-foot building. Again, my front door would be facing the side property line, not the front, not the street. And I think I can do that and make it look attractive and a very positive building for Walker County.
Ms. Steele, I have a question. So when you went in front of the alcohol beverage commission, did you have a design?
I was told I did not need to go to the, to that commission meeting. Furthermore, when I did my application, I did it on the last day of that window. In your guidelines, or in the guidelines set forth, it said that you can apply from this date to this date. Nowhere does it say first come, first served. It said that there would be a lottery if more than five applicants in each district applied, or if someone applied for the same location. We had a trip planned out of town. We left on September the 1st. We returned into town on September the 9th. I did my application first thing Tuesday morning. That trip was planned way before all of this started. That trip was planned way before all of this started. And again, I was told I did not need to be at that meeting.
Other questions? One thing I would like to ask, since you've got a really nice sketch here of a building, I think it may be appropriate if you had a survey and architectural input that you could go back to the Beverage Commission and be able to show them on your plat exactly where the building would sit, because I think you can probably hit and make those requirements as you're talking about, but when you're saying you're within fifteen-hundred-and-thirty-one feet, has that been put on and done by a survey to validate and actually put onto?
It was done the same way Christie measured it to me in the planning office.
Basically doing it off of Q public, okay. So that may or may not be one-hundred percent precise.
Okay.
But you say you've got over six acres, it can probably be figured out by someone that can do that in a CAD system. So that's what I was thinking, you may be able to go back to them with additional information and have that where you can say for certain.
Okay, now see, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but I'm getting mixed messages here, because when I went and applied, I did my application, I jumped through all the hoops. I was told I did not need to go to that board meeting. Now I was being told that you all have the final say on whether or not my application can get approved.
Okay.
Is that not the case?
I'm just giving you my input.
Okay.
The board's not voting at this point. The board's not taking any vote on this. And like you say, you're already C-one.
Mm-hmm.
And it appears from reading the minutes from the Alcohol Beverage Commission, the only thing I see that was the concern was the fifteen hundred feet, because it has to be more than fifteen hundred feet. If you sit here and told me, hey, we've already had to put this building, we're going to be three thousand feet away, I'd go, yeah, there's enough margin of error there. If you're off twenty-five feet one way or the other, it's going to be okay. But when you're telling me you're within, what was it, fifteen-hundred-and-thirty-one feet?
I'll sit on the lot next north of that, too. I can move it even further north if I have to.
Right, and I think if you put that, had a survey company put that on paper, and you went and presented that to the Alcohol Beverage Commission, they would approve it.
Why wasn't I told that in the beginning?
I don't know, but I think taking consideration, this is all new to the entire staff, we've not dealt with this type of issues before, and so they may not have known to bring that up, but just looking at the information based off your testimony here today, that's just my personal opinion, I don't know how the other board members see that, but I think that might give you a pathway to validate that, because even if the board was to take the action to approve this tonight, you've still got to be fifteen hundred feet.
I realize that.
And so you just got to make sure. So that's just my input, and I'll see if there's any other comments from the board.
And I agree, I mean, you know, but they heard fifteen cases at the meeting the other night, September twenty-eighth, so.
They heard fifteen cases?
They made fifteen.
They did not hear mine, because I was told I did not have to be there.
And you didn't have to be there. You don't have to be there. But based on what they're telling us, and again, they heard fifteen different cases, or maybe everybody wasn't there, I don't know, but they're saying to us, the Board of Commissioners, that they're not fifteen hundred feet. If you go back there and you are fifteen hundred feet, like the chairman said, you're already zoned properly, so it's, I'd have to do the, have to do the next.
But then why, why was I told to appeal to y'all and not that board? I don't, I don't understand.
Well, because I was on the same, you were appealing that you didn't have to be fifteen-hundred feet. If we, you know, we don't know for a fact that you're fifteen hundred feet.
John, do you have anything to add? As our planning director, do you have anything additional to add?
The only thing she did.
Well, please, please come up so everybody can see you and we can get this on. This is John Virtley, he's our planning director, and I know he's been involved in many of these.
Yeah, so several of these kind of in the same situation, so you go, come on through. So my suggestion would be to get a survey on it, or at least get a rendering, an exact rendering of the location of it, because you're in a, I know your spot, and I think they were assuming it was going to be in one of those buildings that you were currently at possibly, and I think there was a little confusion after talking to some folks about it. Like Wickle said, it's new, and they weren't clear on exactly where you were wanting to put this. So if you had a survey, or had it staked, or at least had a location, we could get it measured, I mean, we could get a staff member to even measure to verify where you're going to be, if you're willing to get it surveyed and get it staked out exactly, like the footprint of the building, I mean, it could be as simple as that. I mean, it don't have to be necessarily a professional to come out there and do it. We've done that before. We recently did one for a gentleman in Rossville that was approved, and they thought he was too close to a church, and we had some staff members go out there and measure it to see the distance. So, but he also had it marked out, staked out, and had a surveyor come and do that for him.
When did that meet again, John, the alcoholic board?
It will be next month.
Twenty-eighth? Yeah, so within.
Depending on the holidays.
Right, so I thought it might meet in three weeks, I think.
Yeah, it needs Thanksgiving there. Yeah, I'd have to look at the exact date.
Yeah, the Thanksgiving holiday may throw it off.
Yeah, I'd have to look and see. But if you could get it surveyed and staked exactly where the location's going to be, you know, we could do something there to verify the exact distance, and then I think it could be taken care of.
Okay.
That would be my suggestion, I mean, that would be the simplest way in, you know, not to go through.
So you're not going to approve it or anything? I've got to go back and jump through some more hoops to prove that I can?
Well, that, that's to be determined here. We've not called for any motions yet, we're just still in the discussion phase.
Okay.
We're just making, I just make that as a personal recommendation, and John and I had not even talked about that, and he's coming up with the same conclusion. Any other questions of the board? Okay, thank you for coming to speak. Okay, so this is a, an action item here on our board here tonight, since it's under new business, and so, you know, the board can approve, deny, or table this action, and, you know, if the board's desire was to table it and allow that to take place and go back to the Alcohol Beverage Commission and see how those results are, and then the board could take this up at the next meeting.
I certainly wanted to see her complete her project and open her business. If we table it contingent, her follow-up with the Alcohol Beverage Board, that will be outside of the next meeting window. Is my correct, Mr. Gottlieb?
I'm not sure when the next meeting is scheduled because of the holiday, you know, Thanksgiving.
Okay.
I know Thanksgiving is not in the next couple of weeks, but I don't know if they have adjusted their schedule or not for November. Typically, they have their meeting prior to our meeting, but I believe that our last meeting in November has been, and help me out here, Chairman, I, I don't think we're having a last meeting in November.
We're not. No, we're not.
We're having one meeting in November, so maybe the first, our first meeting in December before it would come back to us. I don't have our schedule.
Yeah, that's probably correct.
Thanks, okay.
Holidays throwing us there just a little bit. Okay. So any further discussion?
No, sir.
Okay, so do we have a motion on this action item?
Make a motion to table this action item until Ms. Steele can follow back up with the Alcohol Beverage Board and move forward with her project.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz to table this item. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, oh, any opposed? Hearing none, this will be tabled and allow you to go back to the Alcohol Beverage Commission. Okay, the next we have is SAI Chrissin, I'm not sure if I'm saying that right, Inc., request a rezone from CN Commercial Neighborhood to C-one Commercial for property located at nine-one-eight-zero West Highway one thirty-six, Chickamauga, Georgia, three-oh-seven-oh-seven, tax map impartial number zero-dash-two-five-six-dash-zero-two-nine. I'd like to ask our planning director, Mr. John Virtley, to come back up and speak to this if he would, and let us know the recommendation from the planning commission as well.
Here's, here's that property. I'm sure you're familiar with this property over there. That's kind of the surroundings, the neighborhood, and, so that little, so the recommendation was to deny it based on the current zoning around it.
Okay, so for those watching at home, would you like to articulate what the zoning is?
Yes, sir. So behind him, you have, it's, you have some split zoning there. You have a neighborhood commercial and then R-two zoning that surrounds him. Across the street, there is, there is a store that's zoned neighborhood commercial. Across the roadway there.
So is that the Dollar General?
That's the Dollar General store, and then there's a barbecue store on the corner there that's also zoned neighborhood commercial. And then the rest of the properties around him are split zone, R-two, multifamily, and neighborhood commercial. So there is one ag property that is a block or so up, going east, but everything else around him is neighborhood commercial, and then there's some split zone that's residential, R-two, and neighborhood commercial as well. But primarily, everything surrounding his location is neighborhood commercial.
What else is allowed in R-two?
Sir?
What else is allowed in R-two?
You could do multifamily, you could do mobile homes, you can also do apartment complexes, you could do multifamily dwellings, you can do up to six per acre in max density, and that's without needing approval or variance in R-two. Neighborhood commercial, so neighborhood commercial, you can do residential properties as well, even mobile homes, mobile home parks you can put in neighborhood commercial. So really not a whole lot of difference there, except you just can't do services or sell things from residential in R-two.
I was just curious, I don't know everybody, but. Any other questions for John?
I don't have any questions for John at this time, but I did have some questions for the first Mr. Patel that came up. Could you, could he come up?
Sure, come up, please.
Come up to?
Yes, sir.
So just a couple of questions. So have you looked at any other potential C-one properties available in the county?
Be honest with you, I haven't. The only reason, why would I look for any other C-one when I already have a commercial neighborhood, or my property is already CN?
Understood.
And I'll be, I'll be frankly honest with you, I didn't think it was going to be a big deal changing from commercial neighborhood to C-one, and the only reason I'm doing that is because the ordinance requires it. That's the only reason.
Yes.
And the fact is, there are C-one zoning properties, and there's agriculture and residential properties around it, but there were already C-one before it that's got the approval to build a liquor store.
Okay.
Okay? For example, on one-fifty-one, right near the state line, so he has same thing, he has Dollar General right across the street, and he's got that gas station right there, just like me, but he is C-one, so.
Going into Coteau County, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes. Or Ringo, whatever.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's the only reason. And I would have, but I didn't think it was going to be this hard to get it zoned from CN to C-one.
Okay.
And why would I even pay more to go look for C-one properties around it while I already have a property that's already selling alcohol, a state you're not, selling alcohol? And I understand, I mean, it's, it's very hard to say, people that are going to drink are going to drink, I understand that. And anything further down the road, it's going to go in Trent, it's going to go in Deke County, and that's, they already have it, so that's it.
So I take it you have already considered, thought about a building, a structure that you would want to build, is that, is that true?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I would have plenty of parking spot.
Okay. Would it be detached from your current store?
Yes, it will be standalone.
Standalone?
Yes.
That will not join?
No.
Okay.
Because I have plenty of, the thing is one-point-two acres or something like that, if I'm.
Yes, so his, his was the only one that can accommodate the current parking, he's got quite a bit of land there, just, just to bring that up as well, I think it's one-point-nine-seven acres, if I remember correctly. So that's, he does have the square footage of the lot to accommodate whatever he chooses to do or whatever's allowed on that property.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the board from the, for the, for the planning director? So this is an action item on our agenda here tonight. What is the pleasure of the board for this request of rezone?
Chairman, I would like to have a little extra time to digest this. We've had a lot of passionate input from our citizens tonight, and we are minus one voting person to Askew, and I would request, I would like to table this so that I can get a little more understanding regarding this zoning request with regard to also get a good handle of the pulse of the community on this. So I'm making a motion to table this action item at this time.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz to table the action item. Do we have a second to that motion?
Sir.
We have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore. All in favor of tabling say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this action item will be tabled at this time. Next one we have is the Green Cross Consulting and Marketing request a rezone from CN Commercial Neighborhood to C-one Commercial for property located at nineteen-eighty-one slash nineteen-seventy-nine North Highway three forty-one, Rossville, Georgia, three-oh-seven-four-one, tax map impartial number zero-dash-one-oh-eight-dash-zero-four-three-A. John?
So here's a drawing of that location as well. I think he submitted something to you showing that, what he's proposing to do as far as removing part of the structure. So it was denied due to the current zoning that surrounds it, also CN, that's, joins his property. Across the road there, there is a gas station currently as well, there is some R-two. The parking, I think it was thirty-four-hundred, thirty-five-hundred square feet the building is currently, so it would require nineteen parking spots, and there's only nine now that's allotted, and that's not including handicap or ADA, Egress, Ingress stuff, and so that's why it was denied currently. I think he did submit or show you a rendering of what he's proposing to do to accommodate the parking issues. And what he did turn in would accommodate the parking issues, but that would require him to demo a good portion of that building, because right now, the way it currently sits, and I think that last picture there shows the shared alleyway where there's an apartment and a house that adjoins that property as well, so he would have to do something to accommodate that. You can't park out there or be traveling in and out, that would be, it's not allowed, and that would be a, be a hazard.
So that's a shared driveway with that building to get to that residence in the boundary?
Yes, sir, I think part of his deed allows that to be an easement. He shares, or I think actually he owns half the drive, they own the other half, but that's their primary entrance, and there's no other entrances to get to those structures. That's all.
So is there more than one residential?
Yes, sir, the very back one is an apartment or two. The very back one is an apartment or two story. I think it might be a duplex up and down and then that house to the left there.
Okay. That's also part of the shared ground.
Yes, sir.
Any, any questions of the board for Mr. John? And the recommendation from the planning commission was?
Is to deny it.
To deny?
Yes, sir.
For two reasons. One reason being the, the parking issue.
Yes, sir.
And the other reason being that is noted at the spot zoning, it doesn't touch any C1, correct?
That's correct. It just touched neighborhood commercial, I believe, to the east of it there. If I remember correctly.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
So this is an action item that is recommended to denial on 10, excuse me, 10/19/2023. What is the pleasure of this board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to deny based on the same thing that the planning commission noted.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Hart to deny the rezoning request. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Have a second to that motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion at the board? Hearing none, all in favor of the denial, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that request is denied. The next one is William C. Powell requests a rezone from R2 Residential to C1 Commercial for Property Located at 819 Mission Ridge Road, Rossville, Georgia, 30741, tax map and partial number zero dash 124 dash 046. So John on this one?
So that's the old Ace Hardware building there. And it, how it's, there's already a liquor store that's been approved down the road within 1,500 feet. So that store is not getting rezoned currently for a liquor store. Um, it's a commercial building and has been for many years.
And there's no current application?
No, sir. It can, currently cannot be because Yogi's, I believe, down the road has already been approved for a liquor store as well. Now, if he was to go out of business and they're zone C1, then they can, but then either way, you're only going to have one store there. That was kind of an argument prior to that. But how, how it sits now and within the, the distance of the current liquor store, they cannot open one. So they're asking for a commercial rezone, just to operate a commercial business or to sell it or they're choosing from that point forward. But it's, it should have probably been rezoned previously. It's operating a commercial building out there for many years. So, and then the recommendation was to approve it as well.
Okay, so the planning commission also heard this one on the 19th. They recommended to approve this. Any questions of, of the board?
I'm all for people doing what they want with their property. They buy, they pay taxes on them. But where we got to be careful, where the planning commission's got to be careful, we just denied one for parking, not enough parking. And now we're approving one and it is plainly noted here that it does not meet the parking requirements. You can't go both ways.
Does it not meet the parking requirements? John, I don't remember any of that discussed there.
No, I think it does meet the parking requirements. When you pull into that drive, if you went right, you could, you could wrap around that building. There was, there was a few of them. I don't know if that was, um.
Okay.
But no, that, that one definitely meets the parking requirements. Like it's, yeah, cause it was a, it was a store there, you know, of course Ace Hardware for 30 plus years or whatnot. I don't know how many years, but it's several years and it can, I think it's 6,000, is it 6,000 square feet? Yes, sir, that's correct. But it will accommodate the requirements for the parking as well.
Good, good, good questions and good points if we can get that.
Yes, sir.
Cleared up. So thank you for that. Any other questions, concerns?
No, sir.
Okay, so this is an action item. So what's the pleasure of the board on this request for a rezone to commercial?
Motion to approve the rezone.
A motion by Commissioner Hart and we have a second.
Sir.
Have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore. Any further discussion at the board? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this is approved as submitted. Okay, the next one here that we have is the request for rezone from CN Commercial Neighborhood to C1 for Commercial Property Located at 1250 Mission Ridge Road, Rossville, Georgia, 30741, tax map and partial number zero dash 125065. John?
So it was, it was denied based on the surrounding zoning. Here's a rendering of what he is and the, and the surroundings as well. So he does touch commercial, C1 to the north of him. Both of those used to be two separate. That's where the confusion was. As you had mentioned, there was a mistake on saying that it was touching residential zoning. At one time it was, but both of those have been turned into one plat now. So it does touch commercial property to the north of it. Behind it, you have R1 residential. Across the street, you have R2. And then to the south of it, you have commercial neighborhood that it touches. So it actually sits with, in between C1 and CN. And to the east and west, it's residential zoning. And so the parking issue was something we had spoke with him about. And if he can accommodate the, the parking for that square footage, we asked him to do a rendering or some sort of drawing to present to y'all to show that he can accommodate what would be required to meet the parking requirements. I don't know if, I don't know if he turned anything in. I don't believe he has, but.
Did you receive any parking?
No, sir. So that was something that we had mentioned because he does have diesel pumps, gas pumps. You do have to allow flow of traffic, which he does own quite a bit of, of parking area that could possibly be to the north of him there, that he could do that with. We were just unsure. I think on that second page or the, on the first page there, I, I measured it out when I went by there and you have 100 feet between the sidewalk to end of his property line and you can't allow easements. You gotta go within the easements. And it was enough for 11 spots. And then seven below, he would be required 28 parking spots total because he has 5,600 square feet total. Space, the way it's currently laid out. I think it was going to be the, the store he's proposing would be attached just with a petition wall to make it two separate dwellings.
So it would be a, a liquor store attached to the convenience store that's already there?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So the, the complete building is there now?
Yes, sir.
Just the wall that divides it?
Yeah, so the one to the north, that is already his convenience store with the gas pumps out in front. One he's proposing is to the south. And then of course, it's only 64 or 65 roughly, you know? So he would only could get seven to eight spots, spots max right there. And then on the other side of the parking, close to the pumps, diesel pumps. You know, it looks like 11 spots would be max that he could currently get unless he was to reconfigure or, or to do something there that we're unsure of.
Then you've got that traffic going back and forth.
That's correct. That's something you have to allow for. You can't use a gas pump to park. Can't, you know, add that into your parking allotment. So that's, that's out of the question. And you also have to leave at least a nine foot alleyway to get in and out of. And of course, that's on the small side. So that's why I drew it up like this. And 28 spots are required. Currently it looks like he could get 18 unless he could come up with some rendering and some scale drawing on how he can accommodate that parking.
But the proposed liquor store was being, we call it the west side where it says 64.39. There's only room there for seven spots.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
That's the end of the building that the liquor store would be.
That's where it says 6439. So it's roughly 65 feet. It might be 66, but either way, you're getting seven, eight spots max. So you're still 10, 10, 11 spots off the, the requirements.
Any other questions of the board?
Is it feasible, he could do that?
Yeah, I mean, he could, he could, he could do anything he, you know, if he was willing to invest in it and, and change the parking and, and come up with an ideal and then have it laid out to where he could accommodate that safely. And also have it, you know, for handicap accessibilities and whatnot. So that's what we had to ask, to submit something. I think the other gentleman on 341 brought you something as well. So that's what we were asking for, just to present his case on what he could do to accommodate that parking.
But even if he did that, the line sure, the parking's going to be on the east side.
Yes, sir. He would have to travel through.
On the west side.
That's correct.
You're intermingling those two businesses there.
Yeah, there's, there's no way to accommodate enough parking on the side that he's proposing the liquor store to be at now. Because you cannot use, I mean, you can see that people do park out close to the road, but you can't use easements as permanent parking, you know? So if people do it, yes, but it's not, it's not an appropriate method of parking.
This is the one I was thinking about a while ago. And I'm asking not to say for us to be parking on that as well, for sure.
Any other questions for John?
Just one thing to point out, I think John might've touched on it. So at the planning and zoning meeting of the night, one of the reasons for denial was that was spot zoning, it didn't touch C1, but it actually does touch C1.
Yes, sir, it does touch C1. Now, those two properties that he had touched, yes, it does. Yes, sir.
The 12, the 1202.
That's correct. Yes, sir. Yes, 1202.
It actually is C1 and not CN.
Yes, sir. And that, that 1330 is actually CN.
Right, correct.
Yes, sir. So it does touch, just the backside is all R1.
So it does touch C1, but we can't just approve it. I mean, it's not spot zoning, but we denied one, I was talking about it.
Yeah, wouldn't be a spot.
I agree.
Yes, sir.
I agree with you, Ron.
I mean, we can table and see if he can come up with a better plan of parking, but that, that wouldn't be long with I have been, but.
I think it's going to be very challenging to come back because you're still going to be crossing.
Yeah, that, that's the issue is crossing properties. I mean, initially, you're going to have two separate businesses and you're going to have traffic or you're going to have foot traffic traveling from one business through the next. And when you have gas pumps and foot traffic, you know, it is what it is, you know? It's going to be very difficult to accommodate that.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for the board? Hearing none, this is an action item. What is the pleasure of the board on the rezone request?
I, I'll make a motion to deny ba- based on the parking and based on the congestion of the area. And if, if Mr. Patel could come up with a feasible parking plan and represent it to the planning commissioner for John, then we could reconsider at that time.
Okay, so we, we have a motion by Commissioner Hart to deny. Do we have a second?
I'm on a second.
Have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore. Any further discussion at the board? Hearing none, all in favor to deny the request for rezone, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none of the deny of the applicant for the rezone. The next one we have is the Pigeon Mountain Land Company LLC requests a rezone from CN Commercial Neighborhood to C1 Commercial for Property Located at 5606 West Highway 136, Chickamauga, Georgia, 30707, tax map and partial number zero two eight four dash zero zero three A. Okay, John?
So it was denied as well for the parking and the surrounding area, of course. You can look at the parking lot there on 5606. There's just not adequate parking by no means. And in the surrounding area, it does touch neighborhood commercial surrounding it. There's some split zoning on 341 there as well and some ag at 6676. Same thing with the parking issue. As you can tell, it looks, I guess to the eye, if you were to pull up there, the parking lot's bigger than it is because some of the easement is paved, but you can't, you cannot achieve the parking there as well. And so same thing was discussed. If they could come up with a rendering or some sort of idea on how to accommodate that parking and then present it to this board, I don't think that's happened as well. So it was denied based on the parking and, and also on the zoning that surrounds it. There's not a commercial as far as C1 zoning in that area. Everything's, there, there is a gas station at 5661 that they're revamping, trying to remodel at this time. But other than that, it's the only business around. I mean, there's zero C1 zoning in that area.
Kind of a point where you were alluding, just because that is all asphalt there in particular, that being a state highway, there's probably a wider.
Yeah, that's right. You know, it looks like, and I'm sure people have parked there for years, just pulled up and hopped out, but that's not, that's not parking for that, that business. So, and it's definitely not safe parking for that business right there at that intersection as well. If they, and that's why we suggested a rendering on how to get parking going west because you cannot park to the east there and try to back up, back out. It's a blind spot when you're pulling in. You can barely see the stop sign when you're, when you're coming up on it unless you know it's there, it sneaks up on you all the time. So it's very unsafe.
So the planning commission's recommendation was a denial when they heard this on?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions of the board?
No.
All right, hearing none, this is an action item. Do we have a motion on this item?
Chairman, I'll make a motion to follow recommendations of the planning commission and deny the rezone.
Okay, so Commissioner Stoltz has made a motion to deny the request. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion at the board? All in favor, say aye to deny the request.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that request is denied. Our next item, I'm going to ask our manager of our landfill operations, Mr. Gillis still here with us?
He is.
Hey Payne, would you like to come up please on this next item? This is a purchase order, 2024 dash 198. This is for $33,000 to Big Woody Tree Service for the grinding services at the Walker County landfill. Would you like to tell the audience what grinding services are at the landfill?
Okay. We, we receive brush and trees throughout the year. And around this time of year, we hire a company to come in and grind it up into mulch for us. And then we, we sell that mulch to the community and we also sell it to a recycling factory in Stevenson, Alabama, West Rock. And they burn it and they power their, their factory with it. So this year we've got about 2,600 tons. And we, we got our price and looked around and actually talked to several different grinding companies. And this was the best price. It's actually a local company and they've been doing it for a while. They've been doing it for us for a while. So we feel real comfortable about it.
You did put out for proposals, you had several other proposals.
Yes, and the, the high bid was 84,000, so.
So this was the, the lowest bid and also a company that you've used for five years?
Yes.
So you've got a track record with them and they've done a good job for you?
They know what to do. We, we can, you know, set them up and get them going and they just, they just grind right through it. So it's.
Any questions for Mr. Payne?
No, sir.
Okay, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the purchase order as presented? We have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion at the board? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the purchase order is approved for the grinding.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Payne.
Okay, we're going to ask our road patrol captain, Mr. Anderson, to come forward on this next one. This is purchase order 2024 dash 259 in the amount of $57,262.21 to, I guess, how, how they said, Avid? Aved?
Avide.
Avide? Okay, Avide for 39 AED kits for the sheriff's office. So tell us about this.
Okay, we currently have some AEDs issued to some of our patrolmen. However, manufacturer has discontinued those and they need constant upkeep, pads replacement that usually run a hundred dollars a set. Batteries are close to $300. that usually run a hundred dollars a set, batteries are close to $300. This is a new company that's moved into Georgia. Actually, they've been out west. They've introduced a market into the, some of the larger cities here in Georgia, Savannah, Forsyth County's using them. But it's a, it's a rechargeable AED, and it connects to a, a central program web base, whereas administrator, I can monitor every unit we have, I can see the battery level, I can see the expiration dates on the pads. And the officers can also do that on their phone and get the same, so that they always have a unit ready. They can be tracked by myself from the office, they can be tracked from 911 Center. This would give us capability of every car within uniform patrol would have an AED, so it gives us better medical response, because sometimes my officers are the first one there before the ambulance. So somebody having a medical distress issue, that would give us more opportunity to help them, whereas before, we're limited to how many units we have. One of the nice features about this, though, is typically with our old ones, you have to buy two sets of pads, one for pediatric, one for adults. This unit, with a push of a button, you use the same pad, it just drops the jewels down. There's no change of pads, there's no way to mess it up. So that would, and for eight years, the warranty is good for eight years on the units. The current program we're in, any used pads, any expired pads are replaced free of charge by the company. So those maintenance fees that we have for equipment and pads, we're not gonna have anymore, so.
Any questions?
I got a question. So what do you do with the old AEDs?
Basically, once something's discontinued, we just use it till we can't get parts for them no more. These units are fairly large. My, my thoughts would be if we have other county facilities or something that we can utilize them in, they will need batteries, they will need some, some new pads. That'd be an opportunity to put them as a stationary static site, if, if there's a facility that does not have any currently. I think this is more conducive to a patrolman, because really, the ones we have now, I don't know, they're about a foot wide, maybe a little over a foot tall, and they probably weigh 15 pounds. These, these units are about this big. And they'll do, they're automatic, you push the button, it reads, and it'll deliver the shock on its own i-if it's needed. The older devices, like I say, that we probably got half a dozen that are still serviceable, so we could put them in, in static sites to use inside facilities.
So, so we have 12 serviceable now, and this will put us at 39?
I would say approximately, approximately about 10.
Okay. Thanks, Chris.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Captain Anderson?
I like the fact that you use the same pads on pediatric and adult, that's amazing.
Yeah, 'cause now, especially in a stressful situation, you don't have to think.
Yeah.
You know, if I got the right pads with me.
Sometimes you're like, you know, which one, you know, which one, that way, that's awesome. I like that.
So this is a, is a request of the sheriff's office. This wasn't something that they had in their general fund budget, but we've got this queued up to use some of our ARPA funds as, as a capital equipment purchase, since this is a need that they have to do that. So the purchase order, 2024-259 in the amount of $57,262.21 would actually be funded out of the ARPA funds that we have cash on hand to take care of. So we have a motion to approve this purchase order.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Stoltz to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion at the board?
Yes, sir.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, purchase order is approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain. Thank you, sir.
Okay, we're getting here toward the end of our agenda here. I'm not gonna read every line item, just the sake of time, it's going on nine o'clock. But they, these are in the packet, and these are available online. Our animal shelter took in 180 dogs and five cats, and they were able to outtake 141 and 15 animals, or 15 cats. Looking down here, talking about first response, I think it's important to note the fire department responded to 507 calls. Many of those calls are, you know, health-related, first response-related. Very few of the calls are actually fires themselves, so about 85% of the calls have nothing to do with the fire. So we're running those many lift assists, medical calls, those type things. So that was handled by 715 units. We still have our smoke alarm program, so any residential structures in our county, if you need new smoke alarms, we have some smoke alarms that we can install free of charge that have the 10-year battery life. There's not any requirement of income or age or size of living dwellings. We want people to be safe, and our firemen would much rather come out and install you some smoke alarms to keep you safe than to come out and help put your fire out. So it's a very, very important program, and you can see we've done 106 for the year thus far. Jumping down to our planning, our single-family home, there was 27 new permits in September, so 304 single-family home permits this year. And that's just in the unincorporated area of our community, 304 permits for the year. We were talking about transit earlier. You can see there our transit numbers. We move a lot of people that have places they need to go, that don't have a good transit or transportation option. So 2,244 transit trips in September, that put us to 24,132, and that very well could exceed everything there you see from prior years of the number of people using our transit. We have also a number of people that we take three days a week to dialysis through our transit service. So that's a very important service, and appreciate the board renewing that application request through our transit to get that funding. Okay, at this time, we do open up the floor for anyone that would like to come and speak before the board. Again, we ask you to limit your time to five minutes, and we prefer that you keep your comments related to county business, because you only have a limited amount of time, and if you talk things outside of county business, we can't help you with those anyway. So please.
Well, we hope it's county business outside of these votes. I'll tell you what, we, the citizens, I know us here, and many people we represent, really respect the integrity and the dignity and the leadership of planning and zoning that you appointed. They come up here and deny something based on the facts, the code, the zoning, and then there's talks about everything else after that, about some wishy-washy whatever. So you don't know the pulse of the community? You didn't hear the pulse? Calls even now? No, I'm not having a conversation, I'm not having a conversation. This is public comment, public comment.
But let me say this, I've had numerous calls.
This is my time, I got five minutes, sir. This is my time, five minutes.
Help yourself, sir.
Okay.
Help yourself.
Okay.
I don't interrupt you, help yourself.
Well, you did, so.
Good, help yourself.
Yes. As we discussed before, is there an advantage to have a liquor store in residential and ag districts versus the appropriate C1 zoning? If not, that's a concern. Why ask you it in here? We wait on his vote for this one, that just, the only thing that kept, is keeping it from being built is, is being zoned, okay? The only thing that one could conclude, if there's discussion outside of not meeting zoning, is relationships. If it's, are y'all gonna stick to your districts that you've defined aside off on? I wanna know that. You can't answer that. Are you gonna abide by that?
Go ahead, I don't interrupt you, go ahead.
That's the attitude we need. I asked a question then. I didn't ask to get interrupted.
I didn't interrupt you, sir, go ahead.
Mr. Whitfield, chairman, do you intend to stick to your district zoning? Has y'all defined 18 months ago to prohibit C1 in these residential and CN areas?
Our comprehensive plan is very important to me, because there's been a lot of thought put into that plan, and it's been updated every five years for multiple years. And so I very much take great reference to that comprehensive plan that you've referenced. But there can always be exceptions to things like this.
Prohibited has exceptions.
But I'm just saying, the comprehensive plan in general, because you're asking about zoning in general.
No, I'm not asking about what you prohibited.
This one.
I've talked about what you prohibited specifically, not in general. In general, if we say, okay, well, you know, anything can go if we choose as it was presented before, except for maybe liquor stores. No, it was, okay? And then the fact, if there, again, if there's no advantage of the county and our citizens to have it in residential and ag areas, except for disadvantages, then what's the benefit or approval process if somebody down there wanted, other than maybe relationships? And that's politics. That's not what we citizens want. Now, I'll tell you what, the form of leadership by your planning and zoning is the kind of board members we need in this area, and that will be discussed on reelections if I don't see, and we don't see, appropriate leadership that stands behind what they say. And quit coming up with excuses about parking this and another. The whole thing was discussed, that didn't even include the big principle of the topic of appropriate zoning. And then you approve a C1 zone without even deciding what's gonna be there? It may not be a liquor store, it could be a porn store, it could be a whatever. How's it, that something that significant could go to C1 and not even bring a plight of what you're gonna build? And you don't know the pulse of the community. You don't know the pulse of the people with the kids, the attraction, the crime, the stuff that goes with it. And you got plenty of places to build opportunity, vacant buildings, in the appropriate multi-use commercial areas. That's what I ask. Are y'all gonna stick to it or not? Are you gonna make a commitment to stick what you've already said publicly on TV, and then live on TV? Are you gonna stick to what you approved 18 months ago? Or some relationship gonna cause y'all to deviate from that? That's the question. Because I dare ain't kick to ya, if this continues like this, we'll have a whole another Board of Commissioners, I assure you. I don't have to tell you everything I know, because I guarantee it, I don't know everything y'all know.
Well, no, but you brought it up, no, so.
No, I said one can only conclude that there was relations if you're considering putting something in an ag or residential area versus up the road where you've already approved to put those, where there's plenty of places to put them, like this lady that was back here. You're sitting there discussing 30 feet, a lot more than you talk about putting a liquor store in residential and ag areas. That sounds real good.
You know, it's our job to discuss when our planning director comes up. It, it's our job to discuss, be informed, be educated.
Approve because it didn't beat your pre-proves on it, okay? Okay. How much further discussion does there have to be? Unless y'all have some re-vote to say, okay, we're gonna lock C1 in ag areas and, and residential areas. See it? But you owe me about 30, 45 seconds, sir.
And you did receive that.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else like to speak? Please state your name.
My name's Zai Chapman. I am a member of the Planning and Zoning Board, and I was there when all of this was voted on. No one asked me to be here tonight. I came as a concerned citizen of the county, but in full disclosure, I want everyone to know that I am on the board. John, I thought did a great job speaking to the lady who was denied over 30 feet. There's a lot of discussion around liquor stores. I am concerned about liquor stores in the county and being in residential area. As part of the planning and zoning, I think the commissioners should also be very concerned about spot zoning, as well as something that ends on C1. C1 carries a lot of weight, is what is allowed to happen in C1. Everybody, when they say C1, thinks industry, industry, industry. There is nothing to say that certain types of labs could not go with hazardous chemicals in these residential areas because it's C1. Zoning is forever. These stores come and go. Zoning, it's over and over and over. Zoning sticks. So as a concerned citizen, I think it should be a lot of weight put on what zoning and what that C1 represents, and what it's allowed to represent from here on out. So that's all I've got to say.
Anyone else like to speak? Any, any county topic, it doesn't have to be about liquor. Be about any county topic. Last call. Yes, sir.
Last call, we're off the hook.
Yeah. Edward Yates, once more. I wanna reiterate what this gentleman just said. I didn't catch your name, I'm sorry. But I, I reiterate that, and, and that, it's, it's y'all's integrity that is at stake. What you said, what you voted on, is your word good, or is it junk?
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir. No, no, that's what we're here for, it's y'all's time to speak. I don't wanna cut anybody short, I want everybody to have an opportunity.
All right, I appreciate it.
Please state your name again.
Scott White. Back to Mrs. Steele. She's one of the few that actually went through, did her work, did what she's supposed to do. And then the John gentleman, I believe, for County Plan, he's an exceptional gentleman. I've met him actually on a couple things, all the way up from the library, working on it. I've worked all over the county, I've worked in every building in the county, from the jail, the library, everywhere. I've done, I've been in every building, and he's one of the most intelligent, thoughtful people I've come across. And what he said made more sense than anybody sitting here. He, he goes by the facts, he picks it out. This woman should have not been denied. She shouldn't have had to wait, she shouldn't have done anything. She's the only one in an area, in a high-traffic area, a high-business district right by the Walmart, that should have been approved, and that's where it should be. We've got 20 empty buildings in Russell. You've got empty buildings in Chatham Valley, I understand that, but do it in the buildings that are there, not out by farms in the country, by the schools, by the churches. I mean, and the gentleman proposed his, I know the building well, a good friend of mine, they just asked him to leave because he was ringing the other half, they wanted to turn it to a liquor store. So the problem is, you're gonna have a liquor store and a beer store in the same building, basically. A dividing wall's nothing, this is a dividing wall, that's nothing. It's not gonna stop anything, it's not gonna help anything. And it is right down the road from churches and schools, and that is not a good road it needs to be on. So if, we can't get more people like John, and this gentleman, I forgot your name, but to help with this, I mean, y'all need a committee, another committee to, and I'm not a big committee person, but y'all need somebody just designated to this. I mean, y'all got enough with the police department, fire department, county works, water works, public work, everything y'all got going on. You're gonna have to find somebody that knows to run this stuff and make sure, and just like the gentleman said, C1's forever. And I know, I live in an area, and we've got two gas stations, literally, you can throw a rock between the back, back of each of them and hit it, and it is an awful place on Wilson Road. I mean, it's not, it's not a good area because of that same situation. They'll literally walk in one beer store, and they sell, and, and I don't know what the Patel's are planning and what they're gonna sell on the liquor stores, but every one of them you walk in, there's tobacco pipes. They're not tobacco pipes, everybody knows what that is. We know, we're not stupid, we're grownups. I mean, we've been there, we're one of us sit here through high school, we know what all the pipes are for, we all know what all the pouches are for, the grinders, all that stuff. And that's exactly the same thing that's gonna go on. The other thing is, out in these rural areas, I don't wanna drive up to a farm, or be driving through the country, or come home to my house, and they have these giant flashing LED lights out on the main road. The one proposed down there on 136, the building, we all know it, it was the old video store when we was kids. They didn't have flashing lights, they closed at nine o'clock. You get your video, you go home. But they'll have flashing lights all night long, it's just gonna ruin our beautiful county. You talk about the bicycles coming through, they don't wanna see that. I mean, they're, and the lady pointed out, they're not gonna stop and buy a bottle of liquor in the Ironman. I mean, I don't look like it, but I used to run races and stuff years ago, I didn't wanna drink a liquor running. I mean, it's just common sense, and that's what we need more of, so.
Thank you for speaking.
You're welcome.
Anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir, come up, please.
Can you say about liquor?
That's fine.
My name's Alan Docks, and I got property up on Regalon Road.
Anyway, proposing they bought property up there, and they were trying to build thirty-four houses on Regentland Road. That road won't handle all the traffic for that. It can't, it's too small. Now, they said if he come in, put curbs in and all this, or three exits, use Dox Drive, whatever, then he can put fifty-five houses in. If it won't handle the traffic on thirty-four, for thirty-four houses, how's it going to handle the traffic thirty-five houses? He's wanting to make a gated community. All this, I just don't see it. It was denied, but he's going to do it anyway. That man told me right there, he said he's going to do it anyway. He's got to have three exits coming out of there. I seen where he's marked them, and they're right across the morgue, in front of the morgues on Regentland Road. There's a hill comes up, and it's a blind hill, and you get top of it, and that's where he's going to have his, come out, I see wrecks, school buses going to get hit, kids going to get hit, and everything else. And they told us at the last meeting last Thursday to come down here and force our pennyback, and everybody else showed up. I was the only one.
Well, they probably didn't show up because it wasn't on the agenda, so there was no action going to be taken.
Well, they, they told us up there to come down here. Michael Hicks told me. I do countertops. I do counter tops for several people. Land the countertops, and I got to my daddy's shop there, I do a little bit, keep mama moneyed up. But, I mean, we about get run over trying to get people back down in the driveway so we can pick up the countertop. We about get run over when we try to get, get in and out of our driveway. Been there since nineteen sixty-six. I know there's an underground stream, goes right down to the pump house where Walker County gets their water on Burnt Mill Road. What's all that houses, and all them septic tanks going to do to our drinking water? I just want to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, John?
So I want to speak to the issue on Regentland Road as well. Of course, that was denied from the, from the planning committee. The way that is currently zoned, the gentleman does not need permission. He has seven hundred and fifty feet of road frontage. So technically, he could go in there as it sits and put a mobile home park, do multifamily dwellings. It's kind of a missed opportunity for something that's going to be less hazardous than what he can currently do, because now he can go in there and punch in five driveways without needing a variance, without needing permission to do anything the way it's currently zoned. The utilities will supply it, accommodate from the water, electrical, environmental health approved as well. So what he was proposing is one drive. Whether or not the county chooses to adopt that road in the future is a hypothetical. You can't base decisions on hypotheticals. If that was the case, then you probably wouldn't do anything in life, right? So that's what I was discussing with him. The gentleman is going to build something there. Whether or not he builds fifty-eight half-acre lots and brings the curb and guttering up to county specs and then wants the county to adopt the road, that's his choice. He has that opportunity now how it sits. But he can go in there right now and put six gravel drives, put six houses on each drive, and then that easement he owns as well, and put five additional houses on it, and six houses in the front, which is going to be way more hazardous than having one entrance coming in and out of that road. So I just wanted to clarify that as well. That's what I was discussing, that he does not need permission to build, as long as he's on a half-acre lot for septic tank right now, he's good to go. He can go in there and do what he needs to do, and that's what we were discussing back there. He's absolutely going to build something on that property, but instead of having one entrance now, we're probably going to have four to six entrances, so.
His request was to have a minimum of three-quarter acre lots.
Three-quarter, the lots we're going to follow, the smallest lot was going to be three-quarter, and the largest lot was going to be an acre and a half with a twenty-foot buffer around it, vegetated buffer, tree, forest, keeping all the hardwoods, all the big, all the big trees. And then proposing thirty-four homes, three-quarter to acre and a half lots on one drive, gated, gated drive.
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't just a drive, it was going to be a twenty-foot road.
Yes, sir, and the road was going to be counted to, what I think was misinterpreted, he was saying he's building the road up to county specs. The road, the aggregate, the topping, the binder, is going to be to county specs, but not the curb, will not be up to county specs, which he was not asking. They're going to have a shared interest in their deed for the HOA for the roads. So that was, yes, he was putting a road, not just a private drive, it was going to be a, a road with the cul-de-sac, fire hydrants, et cetera.
And he was asking for no variances either.
No, no, sir. That's correct. Yeah, he meets all his property setbacks. Yes, sir.
Thank you for the update.
Well, what about the soil on that property, though? Would it accommodate?
It was approved as well.
Yeah, environmental health had been involved. Anyone else that'd like to come speak? Okay, we're going to move on to our agenda, our public comments. We've gotten everybody taken care of there. So this time, Commissioner comments, and we'll start with Mr. Blakemore, District One.
Just appreciate everybody coming out, getting involved, giving us your input that helps us make better decisions, finding help, call, text, or email thing.
Mr. Hart?
Yes, sir, thanks for the input. It's been a long meeting, a couple hours already, so thanks everybody for coming. Road Department, y'all got my, y'all got the villa now this week, got the, got the Rose Motor over there, so we appreciate that. And of course, next week's Halloween, so watch out for little kids. Scare on the square on the Fed, I think is, yeah, it is the thirty-first on Halloween night, so just keep an eye out, and pray for rain, please.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you, sir. So appreciate everybody coming out tonight, and I want to thank all of our county employees. You guys do a great job, appreciate your service to our county. The Historic Preservation Board has put some magnets, I think, on the back table back there, is that right, Randy? So help yourself of commemorating the anniversary of the Battle of Chickamauga. And incidentally, speaking of our Historic Preservation Commission, the chairman wrote a very nice letter, and I spoke with Randy about it earlier. I'm going to hold on to it until our entire board is here, so thank you letter from those guys, it's very nice, and so I'm going to wait and read it at our next meeting. Last thing, our Health Department is offering flu shots, so flu season is going to be coming upon us pretty soon, and so I would encourage you to get your flu shot. I had mine Tuesday over there, it didn't hurt a bit. And last but not least, if anybody is interested in some raffle tickets, the Cedar Grove Community Center is offering, auctioning off with a raffle, a Ruger three oh eight rifle with a scope, and it's going to be drawn on November twenty-fifth at their, at that Saturday dinner. They're going to be providing turkey and dressing and sides. Tickets are five dollars apiece, or five for twenty, and so if you would like some, I'll have them up here, and you can just take your tickets and leave some money, and I'll drop them in the box for you. Brian, I'm counting on you to get a hundred of them.
Fifty.
Fifty, all right. Very good. All right.
Okay.
And that's all I have. Thank y'all.
I just want to remind everybody that early voting is going on, so you can vote early at the courthouse the rest of this week, which will be tomorrow, from, from eight to five, and then also Saturday is early voting, starting at nine AM. I believe that's till four on Saturday. You can vote on Saturday at the LaFet Courthouse and also the Civic Center in Chickamauga, which is right behind the city library there. And then next week, the following Saturday will also be early voting, and there's also some additional precincts open during the week for early voting. So last day to vote is November the seventh, from seven AM to seven PM, and all normal traditional voting precincts will be open for the vote. If you live in the unincorporated areas, the only item on the agenda is the T-Splash for the transportation, local option, sales tax of one percent. Some of the cities do have some contested elections within the city, being, I know the city of LaFet, city of Chickamauga, both have contested elections. Roswell does not, and I don't believe Lookout Mountain, Lookout Mountain does not either. So Chickamauga and LaFet city, if you live in those cities, do have contested elections. And also, the T-Splash is on the ballot in all of those districts, whether it be city or county, unincorporated or incorporated, either one, the T-Splash is on the, on everyone's ballot. Okay, at this time, we're going to need to go into executive session, so I need to make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss with our legal counsel a legal issue and also to discuss a personnel item. So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Data.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned until after our executive session, we'll be back. Okay, it is nine forty-eight PM on October the twenty-sixth. We just convened from our executive session with our attorney. There's no further action of the board at this time. Do we have a motion to adjourn and close out our meeting?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hart, we have a second from Commissioner Blakemore.